Basically, as a result of that, what we can do is we can make the cul-de-sacs smaller. I talked with the battalion chief who's in charge of operations and the fire chief, who's also a fire marshal, and talked about how they would fight a fire here. So they confirmed they would not bring the ladder truck or anything onto our driveways. They ain't coming. The driveways are too small. They're not gonna come. They're gonna stay out at the street. They may bring an engine down the driveway, but it's iffy. Most of their firefighting apparatus is gonna stay at the street. And then they will haul lines down the driveway. That's probably how they're gonna fight any fires in the way they live. So the request-
And put these on the big houses and the shores there.
This is mainly the big houses, yeah. Over here, because the front setback is only 20 feet-
Yeah, it's not an issue here.
But for instance, you know, if you went to, you know, the new house, like Lyle and- Layla and Cody's house on Stowe, they're 400 feet from the street. There's no way that that fire truck is going down the Serpentine driveway to get down at the bottom.
It's too risky for the truck?
Yeah, they're not doing it.
They're not gonna risk that truck?
And they told me many years ago, one of their things is, is they can't risk the trucks if they can't be out of commission. That's key to be able, you know, they have a mission. And they're not gonna risk their capability to go down a driveway. They're just not gonna do it.
You've learned that lesson in child 40 every time.
Alright, so what they requested was that the reality is that if they come down, let's say, Stowe Court to fight a fire, they're gonna park the trucks side by side. So they wanted parking space, not turnaround space. Cause they can go backwards and they can-
That's weird.
So they pulled them back off this?
That is that door, I should be-
Oh, no, no, no. Door, the door probably got it. So what they said was, it's okay to have them smaller, but we need them to be a certain size. And it's probably in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 feet minimum. That would allow them to come down and park side by side. And then they said they can always do a three-point turn to get out, or in those cul-de-sacs, they can back up.
Pretty sure.
Cause they're about 300 feet is the long one, you know, between 200 and 300 feet.
Stowe's probably the longest, isn't it?
Oh, Stowe Court.
Yeah, the two ends of Cary actually.
Now, at both ends of Cary, those both have to be straight-up cul-de-sacs. So the one from my house has got to be the full 100 because it's the end of the street. They can't back up 1,000 feet to get in. They're not doing it. So, which is fine, because in front of my house, it's actually flat. The area is ready for that cul-de-sac. The other end of the street is not. It's gonna require some significant surgery. So the good news is, by making the cul-de-sacs the way they are and kind of using what we have, we can save probably about $30,000 to $40,000 on each one of those cul-de-sacs. Rather than make-
For the three of them?
The courts. Rather than make them 100-foot. So if we just close their eyes, the engineers would make them 100 feet. The fire department's agreed, we don't have to do that. Okay, so that's part of the design, because we all have to agree on this, because we start with, I gotta get the engineers watching work.
What about the cul-de-sac on, uh, High Ridge and Metal Lake?
That one's gonna end up being basically a teardrop. It cannot be built like.
That one's the length of a fire truck.
Yeah, that one just is, is just not-
If they can get down some of those driveways in Stowe, they could get down through that-
They probably won't even go on that one where the fire hydrant is, they just-
What they told me-
That's what I mean, they don't need to pull all the way down in there and everything, right?
Well, the issue what they told me, which makes it interesting, would be if Jason's house caught on fire, the cans, which is on that non-cul-de-sac, what the fire battalion chief told me was, they have the advantage, they can fight it with the fire balloon. They bring the balloon up in the back.
Oh, really?
They fight it from the lake. So they can hit it from the lake. Whereas obviously, they ain't doing that in the shores. So it's nice that that end where that cul-de-sac doesn't exist, we have a, we have, they're not concerned.
That's deep water right there, too.
Yeah, it's, so, we get away with not having to put, you know, $75,000 into that cul-de-sac just to have a round cul-de-sac there. So that's, that's, but again, I want the fire marshal to bless the change we're gonna make, but they sound good. The other issue we have is that if you've driven Metal Lake, you'll realize Metal Lake is the only street in the Lake Village that has no fire hydrant. We have to have a fire hydrant on Metal Lake. Metal Lake is 1,100 feet long, and there's a fire hydrant on each end. There's one on High Ridge, and there's one on Woodcrest. And it's on the opposite side of Woodcrest where our lot is. There's 1,100 feet of no fire hydrant. They can't pull a hose 600 feet.
We can't pull it in.
We have to put one in, in the middle. So 500 feet down, we're gonna put a fire hydrant in. Now, the good news is that we have a three-inch water line running down-
That'll do it.
-Metal Lake. The bad news is, it takes a six-inch line for a fire hydrant. So we're gonna have to run a six-inch line, we're gonna have to replace the three, just like we did over here.
We did, yeah.
Just like this.
Actually, that's a good thing, cause there's more houses off service off that street.
So one option is, we can run a six-inch line halfway, tie in the fire hydrant, and leave three inches the rest of the street, cause it's looped. Or we could just do six inch all the way down, so that whole street's got six inches tied in. It's a difference of $15,000. This is probably a $50,000 fix.
What is that, the age of those lines? Are they as old as these were out here? Does that factor into?
Uh, they're not quite as old.
I think you wanna, I think we'd wanna do six inch, cause anytime a repair comes up, we have six inch water made. Cause we have, I have it on High Ridge, right? It's steel lined, we never have it.
It makes sense that it would just be consistent. So the couplers have to be six inches, you know, all the repair tools are six inches. Really, as a, you know, I'm trying to eliminate as much of this three-inch stuff as we can.
And if we lay the concrete, it'll never get done, so it's time to do it.
And I don't think, when I talked to the chief, he was pretty, he asked me, he can't make us do it, but you know, he was, he's very happy with our, with our progress. But he asked me to make sure that everything gets looped. If you come to my house, that's a dead end. That cul-de-sac is a dead end on the water line. It's not looped. It's a dead end. It's different, because if you're fighting with fire, it is a dead-end line. You can't hook up three hoses, you know, you're, you're fighting against yourself. When you go to the one further up, they're bolted on the same line. Whereas if the two fire hydrants are 500 feet apart, but they're looped, you can pull one on both. One's getting it this way, the other one's getting it that way. So he did not want our cul-de-sacs to be dead-end lines. So I said, we won't do that on Metal Lake, we'll loop it, we'll break it down and loop it. But that's a task that regardless of the roads, we need to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
So our choice will be to do it sooner rather than later, and then we'll just do what we did before. We'll either bore under the driveways, or we will take the driveways out.
I think we time it, cause I think if we do like we did over here, right? Just cut the driveway, don't do the boring, don't put anything back, and just let the road come and do it. If we do it in your advantage, we're asking people to drive through.
Okay.
Right, get the timing right on that one.
So that is a, I don't think we have a choice. That, that, then that rounds out the fire hydrant.
What side of the street is the, is that water on the road?
It's on the non-lake side. It's on the inside.
The one with most drywall, so it's good.
And the fire hydrant you would run into is on the far side of Woodcrest. It's on our lot side, it's on the Bill Graham side. So we gotta go underneath Woodcrest to go get it, so.
I think it works out. It worked out nice on Lake Crest where it was, I don't know, what was it, three or four months, and then the road started.
Yeah, it was, yes, I think, I think that's good there. I will give you a, just one, an additional piece of information regarding hydrants. One of the things that the chief talked about was, we talked about the improvements we made to the system. And many years ago, many years ago, when I first got on the council, we did a fire test to see how, what a fire suppression, how it would work. We ran a fire drill, and they did it at my house. They came down with a hydrant at my house, and I put up a hydrant, and they tried to pretend to put my house out on fire. And the drill lasted less than five minutes before we were out of pressure. There was no water coming out of the hydrant. We had a lot of water in the tank, but there was no water coming out of the hydrant, because the system pressure, just like the balloon, the balloon deflated faster than you could blow in a balloon. And it went away, less than five minutes.
Didn't you have an aquarium pump in there at the time?
So, yeah, so we only had, we now have six times as much capacity on the pressure tank as back then. But the other issue that came up was, they asked us to paint the fire hydrants. And I don't really know this, the lid, the top lid on a fire hydrant tells you how many gallons per minute it puts out. That's how they know when they pull up, what to set the gauges at. So it's a color scheme. There's red, green, yellow, blue, whatever, depending on how many. So, we measure our fire hydrants, and the lowest standard, zero to like 500 is red. That's the lowest standard. We didn't have any fire hydrants above 200. So that's why every fire hydrant in the city is red. It's, you can't get any lower than red. Red is the bottom of the fire hydrant. Okay, that's the end. Well, I just haven't checked to see, as far as you asked. So now we checked. So, out here on Lake Crest for Daryl, your fire hydrant, we checked every fire hydrant. So on Lake Crest, they're putting up 1,150 gallons per minute, which means that's now the top. You're gonna get painted green. That's the top level of fire hydrant.
Just the cap, when I was working towards, just the cap for the whole thing?
Cap.
The top part.
So the top part's gonna get painted. Lake Crest is 1,150, Woodcrest is 1,000, Hillside's 1,200, Melody's 1,050, Stowe is between 1,000 for the, everything on the north end, anything closer to City Hall is more. So Stowe at this end is 1,000, Stowe at the other end is 850. Cary at this end is 1,000. Fires that puts out the least amount of water in the whole city?
Your house?
The one in front of my house.
You're still red.
My house. But it's 750, so not gonna be red. But I have, but it's great. It's great that we're, we're actually real. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's great. We're gonna paint the damn fire hydrants different colors. We finally did. And that's, I think that's really good. The fire chief is ecstatic, that we're going through this. Alright, so that's, that's kind of what's going on with the water and sewer line improvements. Okay, concrete roads, an update there. I put in here a, what I'm trying to do with the concrete roads, I'm trying to alert you to certain items as we go through the road issue, just to make you aware of some of the issues. I wonder if it's in here. Don't they let it put in here? There's nothing in here. I gave it to him, he shouldn't put it in. Anyway, what this was, so one of the issues that we are going to deal with, and I talked with our attorneys about it, is in the shores, we have mailboxes. People have built brick, stone mailboxes. And they are in the road. They are in the light of way, they're actually in the road in some places. They're all going to be destroyed. According to the legal entity, you know, I talked to our attorneys, legally, what you do is, you give the owners notice, give them a certain amount of time to move them. They have no property, not a city property. Anything you put in on this side of the barge on that, there's absolutely, unless they have, he called it an encroachment agreement, that no one can put anything on that side of the barge, unless there's an encroachment agreement. But nobody has. What I proposed to him, or what I was thinking of doing, what's missing in here, there's a text dot standard. I looked at text dot to say, what is the text dot standard for, for roads? And they have, every road's different. So if you looked at rural roads, 30 miles an hour, subdivision roads, there are 30 miles an hour or less, which are us. Their text dot standard says the clear zone is 10 feet. So there should not be anything within 10 feet of the roadway. The faster the road, the further it gets. It's like El Dorado, it's like 40 feet. So it's, it's a defined standard of clear zones. So I asked Andy, you know, I don't want people to not be able to put up little address markers, you know, or, you know, to you to have your little, you know, walk that comes out of the house or something. So what I think we're gonna end up doing at some point is, we're probably going to have a separate ordinance, cause he said it is not zoning. Where basically it would say, if you wanna construct something on our property for addresses or whatever, if it's less than, pick it up where Liz, 24 inches?
Yea, tall.
Yea, tall. About as tall as you are. 24 inches?
Okay. Not 24.
I'll just count. But, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to do that at some point. So down the road, we got to clear these out of the way. And come to something reasonable. Cause I don't think it's unreasonable if your driveway is a quarter mile from the street. I mean, the poor pizza guys can't see the addresses anyway. You know, they have some sort of marker or, you know, like Liz, you have a feeling like a short walkway, that's still there?
Yeah, that was, yeah, it's been there.
Yeah, so I mean, that's, no car is going to, no one's gonna suffer serious bodily injury if they hit a sidewalk that's eight inches off the ground. But, but that's, that's a road issue we gotta work out.
So that's not a bad compromise, right? Then most people just grab theirs and move it back before the road.
So you don't move it, which-
And 10 feet is cleared up for the construction for you to go through.
Well, what some people have done, what people, there's a handful of people that have put up gates, and they're at their property lines. You can't put a gate on the city property. And so they're right on the, they're, they're perfect, they're right where they wanna be, which is right on the property line. So they're perfectly legal. And, and that's basically where it needs to end up, is that you move it on the other side of the barge. You can't put it in the barge, and we're gonna go up to the barge. So that's, that's one issue. So that's, that's something that we'll have to pass an ordinance on, to try and get that worked out. The other issue, the design issue, talking with the engineers, dealt with the issue about getting rid of some of the barges. For people that want a water side, just eliminate the barge altogether, and allow the water to sheet downhill to the lake. Very little water's going left and right on the lakeside. So just eliminate the back. I talked to some landowners, asked them what they thought about that, and they were all in the affirmative. They loved it. Now, it can't be, no, like, it can't be areas that don't touch the lake. It's not every place that touches the lake. There's certain places where the barge has no functional purpose. And so the engineers want to, part of the engineering is to look at those places and be smart this time.
Yeah, I think if the top authority allows it, it's no cul-de-sacs, you don't have to do any of that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
I don't think you can do, just if you're on the lakeside, you don't have to-
No, the engineer will be walking, they're, but what we're trying to do is, is we learn from the other set of roads, try to be proactive, and be smart, and walk in, don't just leave stuff on autopilot, where, where one size fits all. Cause the engineers will just cut and paste. And, and, and they want to think to ask, the other issues we're gonna have is, at some point, we're gonna have to decide there are gonna be major inlets, surface drains, that we have to discuss. Those big concrete inlets, you know, what we're gonna do with those. Especially, not so much the inlets themselves, what are we gonna do on the downstream side? In other words, the inlets over here, they're buried pipe, it takes it to down the easement out further down. It doesn't just, you don't have this huge surface drain, half the size of this table, collecting water, and then having this thing, you know, wide open on the other side. Cause of obviously erosion problems. So we're gonna have to discuss that at some point. But the, you know, the road issue, I'll talk to you in a little bit in executive session about some of the stuff. At some point, before we do the concrete roads, we're gonna have to come back and address the thoroughfare part. We're gonna have to pin down exactly which, where the roads are gonna go. What are we gonna do with Lake Crest? What are we gonna do with Green Mountain? That, that day is coming. Okay, so that's kind of, I'm just gonna keep hitting you with issues as we go. At some point, I'm gonna, we're gonna agree on consensus on the line, say it's a task the engineer. But, you know, I want the engineers to start drawing and, and, you know, doing that kind of, you know, working down their path until we, we kind of agree on some of these, some of these issues. Okay, that's concrete roads. Yeah, any questions? So, and continue to meet with the engineers on that. Next up is discussion of the zoning ordinance. So one of the things that we've done is you have a marked-up copy of the zoning ordinance. So Clint has been diligent at putting in some of these changes. I had talked about a couple of changes last time that I was concerned about. So what I did was I wrote these down, because I can't edit the document. I couldn't get them on OneDrive.
Alright.
Yeah, for some reason. So anyway, these, so I went through it, I have read through it now very closely, and I'm, I'm happy with what I see in it again. There are a lot of, you know, there's nothing relating really to property constraints.
Actually, I think everything here kind of, it loosens everything, except for-
Yeah, so this is what I-
That long corner lot thing.
So I, yes, you did, you did the corner lot thing, you did the 25, 50%. This was just two things that are gonna come up in my discussions. And I wanted to take the opportunity to, to, I don't know if we need definitions or not, but the two issues that come up were, we require anything over 250 square feet to have a basin there. And that doesn't make any sense if you wanna have a greenhouse. Obviously, that defeats the whole point of that. So I think that's a pretty, that's a pretty easy exception. The other issue is that it depends how technically you want to, to do this, but I know people on this side of town, I've had people ask me, they have gardens in the side yard. So they have flower beds, and they're growing cabbage, or they like to grow, what is it? Ophir seems to be something people like to grow, whatever that is.
Whatever that is.
It's a vegetable.
That's a vegetable, which means it's, it's not my, it's not on my plate, literally. So when we're talking about the side setback, you know, I had somebody that asked me, they were growing grapes, and they had trellis. And it was on their side yard. And I'm like, I'm not gonna, like, no, that's not a point.
It's barely a structure.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not the goal of the side setback, to make, you can't garden it. But we really have a problem where, a while back, where the side yard used to be, it had to be cleared from the ground to the sky. That was the works. So then it became, ugh, you know, what does that mean? So what I did is I took a stab at just saying, look, you can have gardening stuff in this, you're not, you're not defeating, the purpose of the side setback was about, you know, noise and, and safety, you know, and having to have, you know, so a fire doesn't, and I don't think this gardening stuff is, is really a problem. But those are the only two, if we're going to go to the trouble of clarifying, and then the only other thing I did is I, I think I, it was just a, it was one of the oars that had to be taken out. It was an accessory building greater than 250, there was too many oars there. There, other than, other than the ones that, that are in there, these are, cause I couldn't put them in. What I'd like to do, if there's, is that, at, at some point, we have to agree now to either sit down with Andy, which I don't think we need to sit down with Andy, I think these are all self-explanatory. Clint, you think, you don't think we need to sit down with Brendan for this stuff?
No.
I, I don't think we-
No, cause we're not, no. I mean, those conversations I had over there, I mean, those were fundamentally overhauled in, but these are, these are tweaks. I think, I don't think we need to sit down, when it goes to Andy's office, it's gonna be Brendan to use it.
Yeah, I, I don't see anything that we've done that would substantively affect anyone's property.
That needs more explanation than what the words on the paper.
Yeah, I, I think it's good. So-
They definitely have to review it though, but yeah.
So what would be next is, is the council, without voting or raising their hands or simulating a vote, is everybody, is everybody happy with us beginning the mailing process to make the changes? Everybody happy with this? We've been through it now four times, we had four public hearings.
Yeah, we're not having any problems.
Okay, so we'll, we'll move this down the road, and we'll be, we'll follow whatever that procedure is.
There's still, once it comes back from Andy's office, though, we'll still-
I think there's still a public hearing and stuff on that.
You'll probably have some comments that we'll need to review in the open, so there's still, there's still time to have, if you wanna.
Okay. Alright, so that was zoning, alright, next up. Alright, so Liz, we couldn't get ahold of you kind of at the last minute. We weren't sure if you wanted this report on there each month, or whether you wanted, whether you wanted to see it first and then decide. We, we live, it's obviously not here. So we were on a short clock. So we put it on there.
Yeah, that's fine. The only question I have is- We already, are like, under other income, utility fund?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
There's, this is under revenues, it's $17,000.
You know what that is?
No, that's what I said.
What is that? That's the insurance.
Okay.
We had a, we lost our pumps down at the lift station, we had, apparently it was a power surge, lightning hit, so T M L, that's the insurance.
That's what we talked about earlier, probably the 17 in.
Unfortunately, we get 17 in, and then we gotta spend, we went a gallon on a deck pool. So it's 18 for us to replace the pumps. So-
Still in our favor.
Yeah, just, well, you know, it's like, you know, we didn't budget, this isn't a capital expense. I mean, it, it goes down as a capital expense, but we didn't, we didn't budget this in front of our capital.
This is where, this is where it shows up as a revenue when it really isn't, because we're gonna have to spend it up here, expenditures.
That's right, it's a wash. It's, for budgeting purposes, it essentially washes. But the auditor won't remove it.
Okay.
Remember, you know, we've had this reimburse expense kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, this is like three years in a row where we've had this kind of thing.
No.
You know, yeah, where we've had an insurance claim, or a roof, or, you know, or pumps, and, I'd like to say it's, it's getting better, but it's not, because, you know, our cost of issues are legendary.
And then under expenditures, under capital improvements, we're already like, about $200 to-
Under which, are you under the utility fund?
Yes.
Under capital improvements?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
We're about ready to-
That's-
Is that the lift station?
That's the first pump. Yeah, we got one pump, other two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to make an amendment to kind of, cause then those lines are not, are gonna not jive?
We're gonna, so typically what we would do is, in March, we come back and amend. We'll have all the tax money in, we'll pay the bond, you've got all the franchise, we nail the numbers now, and that's what we're gonna do. I mean, this is one of those gray areas where, you know, do you count, you know, if I give you the money to give to Clint, did you spend the money? You know what I mean? So, we'll probably amend the budget come March, when, when these reimbursements have played out. We don't have the pumps yet, we've only got one. One was backward. Yeah, we'll probably true it up.
Okay. That's all?
But yeah, you know, that's, okay. Alright, next up, we have minutes of November 8th, council meeting. Anybody have any changes to make to the-
No.
I made the motion to approve the minutes.
Serena has made a motion to approve the minutes of November 8th.
I'll second it.
Daryl's seconded it. All who's in favor? All right, thank you very much. Next up, we're gonna go into executive session. At nine hundred.
Yes, but...
Everybody in executive session, let's go talk.
You gotta read it.
You have to.
Oh, damn. I was looking at...
It's been too long.
Okay.
If you hear another ad, hurry up, you're foreclosed on nine twelve, I wrote that a long time ago.
Okay, uh, text government code to win council if you're down, turning on the matters of duty, turning the government mind, the Texas display of professional conduct, clearly conflicted as chapter five hundred one. Text government code to win deliberations about real property, five hundred one oh eight seven. Text government code to win economic development negotiations, five hundred one oh seven six. Text government code to win deliberations about security devices. And now's your chance to grab a cupcake over here. Take cupcakes. Can't you like a cupcakes or?
Oh, I think, uh, I think we're kinda technically, we're not gonna take an action and come out a little bit.
No, I don't know any action to take.
Ooh, red velvet.
I don't know, I just don't really see it. I think, I think they're gonna do that.
That's all you can make.
Ah, I'm sure.
Right now, it's just a couple of houses down coming for a while here.
You get a cupcake?
Not yet.
Oh.